Good evening and welcome to the May 10th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move that the agenda of Monday, May 10th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
I second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Timinski.
Aye.
Director Carlock.
Aye.
Director Merschba.
Aye.
Director of Board Chirine.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget amendment. Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda?
For President Board Members, we have not received any written correspondence.
Do we have anyone who has pre-registered to address the board this evening regarding our public hearing?
Yes, we have one individual who has registered to address the board on the public hearing regarding budget amendment. That would be Mary Arenas. Mary, I believe that you're with us.
Yes.
Great. All right, Mary, if you would state your name and address for the public record, and then I'm going to give you five minutes, and you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Mary Arenas, 3015, Kenner Terrace, Northeast, Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52402, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I think, then I can go?
You sure can.
Okay, just for here today to talk about the budget as far as Kingston Stadium. It was built in 1952, 68 years ago, and I understand that they need more machine sheds or machine shop to work on their equipment. And right now, they're just using like if it's winter time, they use a cardboard to go underneath the vehicle when it's snowing to work on a car. And to do our best work, we really need to have the materials that we need to get a job done. And we don't want the City of Cedar Rapids employees to get frostbite, et cetera. So I would just say maybe check the Sheriff's Department machine workshop garage, or any farmers that have the works of the combines or the beanheads or the cornheads to get some ideas about what works for a machine shed for their vehicles and their, and doing the mechanical work that they need to have done at Kingston because they're running out of room. And for the admission, for the $7 general admission to get into a game, $5 for students and $5 for people 62 years of age and older. I understand it's divided into the three high schools, but none of that money goes to Kingston. It goes to the schools and what money pot? Do you know what money pot it goes into?
Mary, during this timeframe, we're not able to answer questions.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, all right. And then for the budget again, I'm just hoping that that all the teachers and paras can get trained for trauma, like the school at Roosevelt. I think that's really helpful for that school. Due to the teachers not being trained and the principals not being trained, I had to leave that school that she was at, Arthur School, and well, we went to the other classroom, and there was issue when we went to virtual. It was it was four weeks behind, and now we go to Jackson Elementary, and it is a wonderful, wonderful school with a wonderful principal, and it's the how can I help you attitude. And if anybody is competing your learning, you just tell the teacher, but that has not happened. It's just, it is not like most schools at all. It is quite, quite nice. However, the 30 miles short of, I mean, the two miles short of 30 miles every day for me to drive 150 miles a week. There's not really a northeast side school that I can go to, so my daughter will be going to the private next year because there's no other option for us. So I called the governor's office about some help with tuition, and she said apply for assistance, which I did, but I just feel for compensation, maybe the school district could help in some small way to invest in my daughter of African American descent to help her in her education to 12th grade because she was going to go to Arthur Franklin and then Washington. But due to everything that happened, I did five complaint forms. If the board could please view that, and if anybody needs to cross out names, I've asked for them to see what happened of the five complaints so they know what went on, but I never got an answer back. And I just want them to see that. And again, if you need to cross out names for confidentiality, I think that when they see that, they will understand why I'm asking for just a small, small compensation until Jaya graduates because she's going to be going to the private now. So on the budget, I hope, I see that you're thinking about mental health stuff, and I'm just hoping part of that mental health is training like Roosevelt has for being a quote unquote "trauma" school. And I know last year, Arthur lost a boy to the same school Jaya's going to, and now Arthur's losing another one, my daughter, a girl, going to that same school that that other boy went to last year. So the governor said that I have to go to this to ask you guys because you get the 55% of the state, whatever the state budget is, and then you allot that to how you do your budget. I want the board to see my complaints. And again, if you have to cross out, blackout the names, do so because I want the board to see what hell my daughter went through and me to seeing the things that she went through. That's all.
Thank you, Mary, for your comments this evening in the public hearing.
Okay.
Bye-bye. President Humbles and members of the board, that would be the last individual who had registered for the public hearing this evening.
Thank you. The public hearing is now officially closed, and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Bush, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Humbles, and good evening, Board of Directors. I have some updates to share with you, some good news and some things on the horizon here as we approach our last month of the school year. Oh, 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 sorry. Oh, that's something I meant to do. Clicking the wrong button. Apologize for that. So lots of things happening, and it's a very, very busy time for us. But here's a great shout out for our entire district. Really, this is celebrating some major work happening at the elementary schools around the science of reading. Some deep professional learning and implementation of that professional learning around what's called letters training. Because of the heavy lifts and the comprehensive work that's been done around this science of reading training, we have received a National Literacy Award on behalf of the Dr. Louisa Moats Award. And this is only three school districts in the nation were recognized for this, Cedar Rapids being one of them. And just that the work that's been done, the leadership that has executed this work is certainly evident of the improvement with reading that we've seen at the elementary level, especially targeting, targeting whole the whole group instruction as well as our students who need targeted interventions. Special thank you to Diane Blythe and Carl O'Reilly, teacher leaders in our system who really lifted this work up and made the professional learning access happen, and coaching our teachers and our instructional coaches about how to implement this work. So a distinct honor, and we are very proud as being only one of three districts in the nation to receive that award. Vaccination update. They are now available for students 16 and over. With that information we received just over a week ago, we'd executed a plan to make vaccinations available to our students during the school day hours at the high schools. However, just today, this is just in, the FDA has approved for kids who are 12 years old and over, and that is for the Pfizer vaccination. So we will be sending more information to our families. At this point in time, I think what we'll be looking at is continuing to target our high school students who would be ages probably 14 and up. And then as we move forward, we would make plans for, of course, how to execute this at the 12-year-old and up population. It would be challenging for us to do this at the end of the year, to shift gears and make that accessible without a clear plan and access to the Pfizer vaccination, whereas we'd already created a plan for the 16-year-olds at the high school level. But we just really appreciate the access, and we also appreciate the communication with Lynn County Public Health and our nursing team to make this happen as for access for our students in our community. A recognition for some of our students, individual students and some student groups. Washington High School junior Vivian Shanley has received a National Jazz Award. This is a jazz composition award. She's written original music and is also, of course, as a part of our music teams at Washington High School. But her original jazz composition called Ideal Realism received the, this international award, but focused certainly as a heavy lift. And you know, this doesn't happen without opportunities being presented in front of our students. So shout out to the music department who made this available to Vivian, but very proud of our music teams and this individual student for her individual recognition. And then also at the middle school level, National History Day winners. At the state level, we had three History Day winners. Pictured here is Kaitlin Anderson, but also we have Annabelle Oval and Luke Horton, who received state recognition and were winners on National History Day. They'll go on to the national competition for their work around History Day. Special thank you to their teachers who are listed here on the screen, who again, made the opportunity available for our students. So here we are in May, and the learning continues to happen. And I would say for both our high school music student and our National History Day middle school students, these are long-term projects that come to fruition at the end of the year. And so just so excited for our students being recognized and still able to compete at the national level. That's all I have for you this evening, Board of Directors, and thanks so much for your continued support of all of these programs. Doesn't happen without board vision, so thank you so much.
And thank you, Superintendent Bush. And as always, the updates are great to see the work that is being done within our district. So thank you for that update. Do we have any board reports?
President Humbles, I have a short legislative report. Really, just two items to draw our attention to, the charter school bill that we've been watching all of the legislative session actually passed week before last, I believe. And I think that's on the way to the governor to be signed. The other one that cropped up recently was House File 868, and that was an education funding bill that at the very last minute had an amendment added to it that would alter the accreditation process for public and private schools. There were some items in that amendment that were concerning. It did pass the House late at night last week, and it will be moving on to the Senate. We have registered our position with all of the Iowa senators, and we hope that they will listen to the experts in education and strike that amendment from the bill. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other board reports?
President Humbles, I do have a quick update.
We can't hear you real well, Director Board Chirine.
Is that better? No?
Rihanna, you need to be quiet.
Can you hear me now? It's like that commercial. Yes?
Well, barely, we can barely hear you.
Okay, never mind.
Next, we will move to communications, delegations, and petitions. Board Secretary Day, do we have anyone pre-registered to address the board this evening?
Yes, President Humbles and members of the board, we do have individuals who have pre-registered for tonight's communications, delegations, and petitions.
I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to please state your name and address for record when called. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as the timer and inform you when the time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time except for to clarify the nature of the questions or comments from the individuals speaking. Laurel, will you call our first speaker?
I sure will. Our first speaker this evening is Kim Baldwin. Kim is here to speak about para-professionals paying concerns. Kim, if you would please unmute yourself, and once you begin speaking, we'll go ahead and start the timer.
Good evening. My name is Kim Baldwin. My address is 2246 Brooklyn Drive, Northeast, Cedar Rapids. I'm currently an autism para at Nixon Elementary. I would like to take the time to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you regarding the wages for the district paras. I'm here tonight on behalf of the paras of Nixon Elementary and the paras throughout our district. As we all know, it's been a very difficult year for everyone working in education. It has been even more difficult for the paras due to the staff shortages due to the district-wide hiring freeze. This hiring freeze has been, has caused different issues in our classrooms such as short staffed or having to pull staff from other positions in our schools to be in our classrooms. Paras are leaving our district due to mental, physical, and emotional stress of classroom staffing, along with the lack of pay being received for all of those and all that we do. I would like to touch on a large turnover in paras affecting our schools, students, our district, and our employees. First off, our students. Every time a para leaves the district, it breaks a bond, the trust and a routine for students. In autism, these bonds between the paras and the children are vital for the children to learn and function throughout their day. Students who are to be on a one-on-one with a para are not getting the support they need. Paras are being forced to be a one-on-one with their students and take responsibilities of additional students in the classroom. This is causing a breach of the IEP. The students are not getting the teaching instructions they are required to have for their IEP. Students are being left alone or work to work with no support, causing them to be frustrated in behaviors. These behaviors are leading to children being targeted by frustrated or unsupervised students, causing injuries to students. Next, our district. Every time a para leaves the district, it costs the district time and money spent to fill the position. The principals are required to ask for the position to be filled. HR posts the position. The principals review the applications, the work history, interview the candidates, and more. Then HR does the paperwork and orientation. Principal spends time getting the para established in the building with the teacher. The teacher and the para then have to go through the classroom expectations, responsibility, creating a working relationship. Most importantly, the new para has to develop a trust and bond with the students. This could take from a few days to a few weeks. The district also has to spend time and money on the paras doing online training, CPR training, teach classes, and being out of the classroom causes a stress on the children and teachers due to lack of substitutes. Our employees, paras are the lowest-paid employee group in our district, but they hold a vital position in our schools. Paras are being injured on a regular basis, and we are not given the time to fill out the forms for injuries. These forms must be completed within 24 hours of the incident. This year alone, I have been hit, kicked, pinched, bit, spit on, scratched, shoved into a wall, and urinated on. I have injured my back, both of my wrists, and I have scars from being bit. Last year, we had a para receive a concussion and other serious injuries. I currently work with a para who has to work multiple jobs just to be able to provide for her family. Her income from being a para is only enough to provide insurance for her family. Paras are a vital part of our classrooms, school, and district. Our pay is not worthy of the job we are doing to support our children in our district. We feel that we are not appreciated. Our teachers, principals, and building staff tell us how much they depend on us and appreciate us. I'm asking you, as the leaders of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, to please show us that we are appreciated and respected by paying us at a rate that we can live on and which honors the value we bring to the students and their learning. On behalf of all the paras in the Cedar Rapids District, I thank you for your time and your considerations tonight.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Next is Sarah McBride. Sarah, if you would please unmute yourself, and once you begin speaking, I will go ahead and serve as your timer.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah McBride, and I live at 4908 Hayfield Court, Southwest in Cedar Rapids. At the end of the 2021 school year, I will have completed my 18th year of teaching all in special education settings. I was able to watch the last school board meeting that took place on April 26, 2021, and a topic that is near and dear to my heart was brought to the board's attention. The topic I'm speaking of is para pay. Being in six elementary buildings, one elementary out of district, and a middle school setting, let's just say, I have had the privilege to work with many amazing and a few not-so-amazing paras over the years. But the overall lesson I have learned throughout all of this is that paras are the heart and soul of our programs. I know I could not successfully run my program without the support of a para, sometimes two or three paras, giving me support in my classroom and other settings throughout the building in order to help my students succeed. When I think about all of the work my classroom para has done for me this year, I am so thankful for her showing up each and every day. I want you to think about these numbers when we compare, looking at my classroom and the support we had from last year to this year. My classroom this year had five students and three paras. My classroom this year has five students and two paras, but mostly just my program para because my other para was gone for due to medical leave. So in all reality, my program para has been doing the work of what three adults did together the previous year. I also want you to think about the numbers that during 2019-2020 school year, we had 554 paras serving our district and our students. We currently have 422 paras that are employed with us. This is a reduction of 32%. I'd like to share with you some quotes that I have heard from paras over the years. This is just the small handful of some of the things that they have shared with me. I can't stay late today because I have to work at my second job at 4:30. If I had a mortgage, there is no way I could afford to continue to stay in this job. The only reason I stay in this job is because I need the benefits. I could go to Target and make over $15 an hour and not have to change diapers or deal with all of these behaviors. When I think about this, not only are we doing a disservice to our paras who work hard and love on our kids, but we are doing a disservice to the kids who need that love and support the most. We need to figure out how to hire and keep paras within our programs and in our districts if we ever want to think about closing the gap. We know we have an issue with para turnover in our district, and we need to find a solution to this and not continue to talk about it year after year. A solution I would like to present to the board is to consider paying our paras $15 an hour and looking for possible ways that they can increase their pay, whether that might be taking classes or other professional development opportunities within our district. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak on something that is a very important topic to me.
Thank you, Sarah. Next is Candy Bakeress. Candy, if you would please unmute yourself, and when you begin speaking, I'll go ahead and start the timer.
Okay, thanks, Laurel. Hello, my name is Candy Bakeress, and I live at 2318 25th Street, Southwest. I'll be speaking this afternoon as the president of the Cedar Rapids Organization of Teacher Associates, which you'll frequently hear as CRODA. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what I and many others are going to continue to share with you about para educator wages. I've worked for the district for over 20 years, and I've seen a lot of amazing things, but also some frustrating things. We all know that we all want what's best for students and the communities. But with that said, we've unfortunately watched quality para educators leave our district over and over and over again. I cannot tell you how many times I've personally heard great people who are doing great things say, "I love being a para. I love helping students, but I can't afford to keep working here." And it breaks my heart every single time. Our kids deserve better. Our employees deserve better. We do understand that public schools have been underfunded for over a decade, but we also understand that paying paras these low salaries is not sustainable or healthy for our kids, our paras, the staff, the district. I do want to say, though, that we're grateful for the one-time stipend that will be paid in June, so thank you. That is a help, especially for those dealing with deracial issues. I will also say that collectively, CRODA and the Cedar Rapids Community School District have done some really positive things for para educators, and they are really grateful for that. It has benefited them, but it's also benefited student learning. Language around inclement weather, leave times, and professional learning are all really important parts of our contract. However, every year, the Cedar Rapids District settles the same percentage for all employee groups, which cements the lowest-paid group into not only staying the lowest-paid group, but it does not even keep up with inflation. 17 cents. Let that sink in. 17 cents an hour is the raise that our paras will get in the fall. If that's not the lowest increase in all my years of bargaining, then it's close. And I've been on the CRODA bargaining team since 2008. It hurts to have to tell our members that because we know how many of them are struggling to make ends meet. So you've heard, and will continue to hear personal stories of how current para educator pay impacts our paras, our teachers, our students. But what I'm going to focus on are the bargaining parts and share a little bit of background. There are a couple of things that have contributed to this low starting wage. I'm going to focus on the two biggest that I've seen, one of which is an equity issue that went on for years. Up until a couple of years ago, the para bargaining group had to put part of the settlement money they received year after year towards district contribution for health insurance. So that went toward health insurance costs for paras while other bargaining groups in the district had a full single plan totally paid for, which I believe was roughly 350 or slightly more at that time. This money is money that could and should have gone towards para wages. You may not know this, but there's currently language in Iowa code that states all public employees should make a competitive living wage, and CRODA has been working towards that for years. It was actually a Cedar Rapids para educator's letter, which was read on the legislative floor, that helped get this language at the state level. However, sadly, it has yet to be funded at that level. However, sadly, it has yet to be funded at that level. Representative Mary Masher read a letter from a Cedar Rapids para years ago and shared that this para who worked with our kids day in and day out did not receive a paycheck and that she actually had to pay into the district for the healthcare she needed for her family because the costs of family health plans are so expensive. So having to use part of our settlements to pay for benefits that other groups had hurt para educator wages. Secondly, CRODA bargaining teams have been repeatedly told there is no board authority to bargain for different settlements for different bargaining groups, which is extremely hard to understand when so many Iowa public schools do just that. They give the lowest-paid employees the larger settlements to help bridge the gap, and they've been doing it for years. We've tried to share data and stories about this in bargaining, but have yet to see movement on this. Seventeen cents is very disheartening to the para educators who are Cedar Rapids, who work with our Cedar Rapids students, who have the most challenging needs and desperately need consistent support. Please honor the work our para educators do and give the flexible authority to settle contracts at different amounts. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy. Thank you much for your comments. Next to speak this evening is Candy Clark. Candy, if you would please unmute yourself. And once you start speaking, I'll go ahead and service your timer.
Okay, thank you, Laurel.
You're welcome.
So my name is Candy Clark. I live at 402 St. Olaf Street Southwest. I work as a one-on-one at Hiawatha Elementary, and I just want to talk about the inadequate pay that the school district is giving our para educator group. Our group has been the lowest-paid group in the district for years. With the minimum wage soon to be $15 an hour, I think the board should be coming up with a plan to increase the starting wage for para educators from $12.20 an hour, excuse me, to $15 an hour. The bump up in the rest of, and to bump up the rest of the para wages to reflect the $15 increase. I personally do the job of three people at times because we are short on staff and subs. Last week alone, I did this three out of the five days. I know you say you appreciate, but we do. But in all honesty, none of us feel like we are being appreciated when we're given such a ridiculously low seventeen cent raise. And we found out at the end of today that our only F para in our building is going to be moving to a different school for the rest of the school year, which in turn puts more, more pressure on the ones that are left, which unfortunately are one-on-one paras who will be taken away from their students at certain times of the day to go and, and fill in for this one para who has not only be a student to watch, but she also has a lunchroom duty and a recess duty. And so it just, we do so much more than what you see that I just believe that if you would come into our buildings more often, you would see what we have to do to make our kids safe and learn and have fun while they're doing it. And I, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Candy. Appreciate your being here. The last speaker that we have tonight is an individual who actually submitted something in writing, and so I'm going to read that on her behalf.
School Board Members, my name is Amy Plots, and I reside at 3126 C. Avenue Northeast. I've been in an elementary special education role for seven years in the district. I'm unable to attend tonight's board meeting, so I'm writing to you today to advocate for fair pay for para professionals. Working in special education is a difficult task, no matter your role. The hardships we witness through working with our students takes an emotional toll on us. The wage that para professionals earn is not equal to the amount of work and emotional labor that we are asked to do each day. I believe the public's perspective of a para is someone who sits next to a student in a general education classroom and helps the student complete work. This is hardly the case. Special education para professionals are literal lifelines to many students that we serve. There are paras responsible for monitoring seizures and several allergies, hooking up feeding tubes, and physically transferring students from one location to another. Other paras are assisting students with self-regulation and responding to crisis when regulations fail. A student in a behavior crisis could be running off property, trying to harm themselves or harm other staff. These examples are things that happen daily in nearly every building. Having paras available to do these type of tasks and many others allow our teachers to continue delivering instruction to our students. Our students deserve quality staff working with them, no matter the capacity. Each year, it seems to be more and more difficult to fill para professional job openings. This year, I had three different people start as one-on-one paras for a student and then quit. High turnover, frequent absences, and a lack of substitutes negatively impacts our students. These issues could be reduced by increasing para professional wages. Feeling valued by your employer reduces absenteeism and increases loyalty. The stress of having paras gone is felt across the school. This is a domino effect that is also impacting teacher workload and burnout. Fast food restaurants in the area pay $11 an hour with significantly less responsibility. Nearby districts pay their paras nearly $4 an hour more. CRCSD needs to act now and increase para professional wages in order to hire and retain quality employees. Respectfully, Amy Plots. And that is it for our speakers this evening.
And I thank all those for their comments. Next is an item on our agenda that our board always looks forward to celebrating. At this time, I'll turn the introductions of our staff to Linda Nagle.
Good evening, President Humbles and the Board of Directors. It is my pleasure to recognize employees who have been with the district and dedicated so many years with us for 25, 30, and 35 years. What an amazing accomplishment. All of the recipients' names will be read so that they can be recognized for their years of service, and I will start with the 25 years. So Deb Barber, Ann Buckley, James Burke, Doris Courtrait, Laurel Day, Suzette Early, Keith Gaster, Cheryl Gillick, David Griffin, Shannon Haas, Adam Hanaron, Anne Holver, Tim Johnson, Mary Keltenberg, Compton Box, Christine Kelso, Timothy Lewis, Deb Maurcheck, Corinne Nebekire, Gwen Neimreier, Lisa Odell, Erin Olander, David Parker, Julie Quant, Mary Rossman, Lisa Reed, Sarah Remoroski, Jacob Ringwald, Lisa Rothmeyer, Vera Roehousky, Frank Sherman, Jeanette Schroder, Nicole Schultz, Grant Schultz, Kenneth Singleton, Warren Sprouse, Stephanie Stolken, Kenneth Rowell, Jean Vanos, Tanya Wilson, Storm Ziegler, and Kathleen Ziegler. 25 years, yay! We sure were all here to celebrate with them. Amazing accomplishment. We have a few under the 30 years. Joan Boche, Christine Callahan, Tanya Johnson, she's on tonight, Aza Kawalski, or I'm sorry, Cam Howie, sorry about that, Mary Martenson, Glenda McMillan, Gail Reeker, and Michelle Wilson, 30 years. Yay, 30 years. 30 years! It's amazing. 35 years, we have Bill Dyers, Kathy DeVork, Paul Kincaid, Jennifer Lang, Peggy Sheets, and Cynthia Zerli. So congratulations to all of our service award winners. What an amazing accomplishment. Each of our recipients will receive a service reward as, through the foundation, so we're very happy that the foundation's able to help with that and help recognize our employees of this amazing accomplishment. And I think we all look forward to the days we can be in person to celebrate with them again.
Right.
Thank you for taking the time and allowing us to do this in the board meeting. I know they will appreciate it.
And on behalf of the Board of Directors, we extend our sincere congratulations and appreciation to each and every one of you for your years of service and commitment to the students and staff and families of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Thank you so much. Next, Superintendent Bush will recognize the Board of Directors as part of the Iowa Association of School Boards School Board Recognition Month.
Thank you, President Humbles. And as distinguished Board of Directors, this moment is about recognizing you and what all of you do for our district. And personally, I want to thank you for your support, especially during the school year of this very unusual school year. Your leadership, your vision, has definitely kept us a steady ship. So on that note, each May, the members of the Executive Council take a moment to honor and recognize our support for the Cedar Rapids Community School District School Board members. Annually, the Iowa Association of School Boards designates this time to show support and provides a relevant theme for the year. This year's theme is "School Boards Leading Through Uncharted Waters." Over the past year, leadership at the board table has come with challenges and decisions no one could have anticipated. School boards have engaged in complex discussions and made tough choices that impact the health and safety of students, staff, and the community while keeping student achievement and educational equity as their primary focus. In a normal year, these unpaid volunteers work diligently to ensure schools provide the best education possible for Iowa's future citizens. In 2020, they've persevered and led through uncharted waters to make critical decisions without having a map to navigate these decisions. As so eloquently stated by IASB, board members are locally elected, non-salaried, public officials entrusted with the task of providing the direction for the education of students across Iowa. The Board of Education is a uniquely American institution dating from the earliest days of our country. It has made public schools flexible and responsive to local community needs. Today, public schools are being asked to raise the bar of academic achievement while remaining good stewards of the public's investment in education. All Cedar Rapids community members should recognize the vital contributions of these board members and focus attention on the critical role these elected public officials play in the education of our children. They establish a vision for the educational program, and they make a difference in our students' lives. Board members pull together as a team toward a common goal, and our goal as a district is every learner future-ready. While they may individually disagree on certain issues, their role as a board is to consistently strive towards that vision. During this year, we can attest to the amount of dedication our school board members continue to have for our school district. It is an honor and a privilege to serve with you. On behalf of the members of the Executive Council, our district, and our community, thank you so much for what you do for our students each and every day. I invite mics off and rounds of applause for our amazing school board. I would use to say two claps, and then I say one, two, you do one, two. One, two, claps, one, two. Thank you, school board members, and thank you, President Humbles, for the opportunity to recognize all of you.
And thank you, Superintendent Bush. Now, moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
Yes, President Humbles, could we please pull BA-21-311 for a separate vote?
Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will pull BA-21-311. And first, we will vote on the rest, and we'll come back to BA-21-311. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion at all? This is a roll call.
Director Riesinger.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Bortshardine. Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Merschba.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we will do a vote on BA-21-311. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And abstained. Thank you. Next, the board is asked to approve the fiscal year 2020-21 budget amendment. Are there any questions at all for Dave? Dave, do you have any brief comments at all?
None, other than most of the amendments has to do with COVID recovery type of expenditures that were anticipated in having, and so we're just increasing the budgets to help align that, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, was there someone else? Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Last on our agenda this evening is the presentation regarding community partnerships. I'll turn the meeting over to Adam Zimmerman.
Good evening, members of the board. It's great to be here today. I am joined by Stephanie Neff. Stephanie is our supervisor of wellness and community partnerships, and I, and I know Stephanie is really excited to be in front of you today, talking about community partnerships. We have amazing community partners and resources in this community. Our charge, I'm going to share my screen real quick if I can do that. I can give thumbs up if you can see it. Our charge is really to create a system that effectively leverages these resources and amazing people to push our system indicators that we have aligned to. So today, we're really hoping and excited to get your feedback on the framework that we've created, as well as kind of contextualize where we've been in this process and the goals that we're attacking this year and in years to come. I can say that this has been a labor of love. It's been a four-year process. Stephanie's been here for five. Many of you have seen us through, and we've come a long way, and we still have much work to do, but we're excited to present where we are and get your feedback tonight. So with that, Stephanie, I would just like to acknowledge all of Stephanie's hard work. She came on five years ago now and has taken this program at its nation's phase and taken the charge to create a comprehensive system to support partners and to make sure that we're driving towards outcomes very seriously. And like I said, we're on the way, and I would like to acknowledge all her hard work in the last five years. So with that, I'm excited for your feedback, and I'll let Stephanie start us off with the history.
All right, great. Can everybody hear me?
Can everybody hear me? Thank you. So as Adam mentioned, I came on board kind of at the end, in the middle of the school year of 2015, and just at that point, we were kind of identifying some inconsistencies really with the experience and the opportunity for partner organizations. So any community organization interested in working with the district to provide services or programs typically directly to students, either during the school day, before, or after the school day. But partners really had questions, or community organizations had questions about how to enter the system. Some partners were getting funded, other partners were not receiving funding. There was really no process in place for us to be able to bring in new opportunities to address some of the evolving needs that our students had. So principals also, at the building level, were inundated with organizations offering programs and services, but with very little plan for integration. And so we had kind of this not very systemic process. And so in order to tackle that, 2017, 2018, we created an RFP process, and that intent was really to focus on the highest potential for impact. So the partners who were already being funded and those who were interested in receiving funding to come in and provide services to the district. And then, as we, after we developed that process, we could really see what organizations were providing to students and how they were providing those services, and it allowed us to focus more on the outcomes and align our strategic system indicators. And so we've kind of continuously involved in that process and began to align our RFPs to needs, specifically in the areas of equity and mental health, which are where kind of our gaps in service are, if you will. So where do we, as a school district, need to increase our capacity? We know we do education really well, but we are not the experts in mental health and are still improving in our equity initiatives. And so how do we leverage the expertise of our community organizations who do those things really well? So this is the process that we have put in place over the last three, three, four years. In April, we just actually finished registering community partner organizations. We have never before had a comprehensive list of the organizations that we partner with, and so we're missing some opportunities to be able to better support students through those partnerships. This process involves a lot of support, and we've really tried to increase our communication, be more transparent, to give partner organizations or potential partner organizations opportunities to enter into the system. And so this cycle just shows that it's repeated every year. We kind of provide support in terms of type of partnership, a lot of education going on right now, specifically in terms of the registration process, how we want to align our services and our district's strategic system indicators, so that partner organizations can see those and can align their mission. We do lots of promotion and kind of enhancing communication between the schools and partners to help develop that plan and figure out how we can best combine resources to build effective and impactful programs. And then we start connecting students with programs. This was kind of the plan last year, and then it got thwarted a little bit by COVID-related things, but hopefully this fall, we will be prepared to be able to get those rosters of students in place. And a dashboard that was newly created this year that shows us data for troubleshooting, being able to see which students are served by which programs, and have real-time information that updates on their progress, so that staff can, in the partner organizations, can make timely and impactful decisions.
I think I'd highlight just two things here that I'm really excited about. One, in this registration process, which is new this year, in future years and this coming summer, we hope to bring a comprehensive set of agreements to the board to allow you to see those and understand where our partnerships currently exist, instead of seeing them throughout the year on the student services side. In addition, when we talk about outcomes, and when we're seeing those dashboards, and Stephanie will get into a little bit more of this later, that really is where the money is, is being able to see, hey, what's working, and how do we support our partners differently if they're in need of support? And aligning those ultimately to our end goal in our system indicators.
So this is something that we have really never been able to take that bird's eye view look at before. The combination of district and program outcomes allows us to see students from a different perspective, more of a whole child perspective, and then we're collaboratively with community organizations to help address barriers to academic achievement. So not only do the district dashboards help our partner organizations, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute, but they also help us see that overview of the partnership program. So we are excited to share that we are, our partner organizations are specifically targeted, seven funded partner organizations from this year have been serving 1,500, over 1,500 students, which is almost 10% of our district population in the areas of equity and mental health, which based on the amount, the total dollar amount we've invested in those partner organizations, works out to about $372 per student. So still moving forward with the exact impacts on the individual level, and those obviously vary, but that is an investment that we hope you are comfortable with moving forward, and we certainly believe that our kids are worth it. So I wanted to share with you a couple of other ways that we are looking at the dashboards. One of those is that, again, we can tell which students are part of which programs, and so this is all programs overall. You can see that our district data is on the right-hand side of, if you're looking at your screen, of the demographic breakdowns. Right next to that in the middle is who our mental health partners are serving, and this is what we want to see. We want to see that match in demographics by race and ethnicity, that we are making sure that our mental health partners are serving kids that are consistent, the demographics are consistent with our district population, and they are really almost right on. I mean, we couldn't, we're doing very well in this area with our mental health partners and making sure that we are serving kids that are, that that's consistent with our district demographics. And then you look at equity partners on the far left. Can you just, I think, go back one, Adam? Our equity partners on the far left there, and this is exactly what we would expect as well, that there's a lower percentage of white students that are being served in these programs that are specifically targeting non-white students. And then the other thing we can see through our data is IEP status, and in this, you can again see that our district percentages of students with an IEP versus without an IEP are pretty much the same as equity partners in this area, which is what we would expect. And it's double in mental health partners, which really tells us that there's a huge mental health component in academic achievement. Not information that we didn't already know, but it shows up in these data, and it allows us to make decisions based on that. So as I mentioned, we have a handful of partners that we've been funding over the last few years that have really committed to the journey, especially during this year, and have worked through this data dashboard process with us, and we really wanted to have their voices at the table. So Justin helped us put together this brief video that gives their perspective on how these system-level changes have helped them improve their programming.
One of the biggest things that was said to me when we decided to go with the district was is we wanted to build a relationship, and that's what I believe in, is build relationships with the people I work with, ultimately the district.
Now it feels like there's this process, you know, in the last couple of years, they've issued an RFP, and so you have the opportunity to lay out what is the need we're working to address, what is our project design, and what are the outcomes, and what are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna show this works?
Partnering with the district this year has been Nirvana, comparatively speaking. We are working with people who get it, who are willing to learn, who hold us to account, and who find the growth that we're experiencing a positive. They are not threatened by the idea of students learning about their culture. They're not threatened by the idea of there being a culturally specific program. So that is, that's extremely comfortable.
And we are able to, because of the great statistical layout that the district has created, we're able to see office referrals, grade changes, disciplinary issues, and which all bode very well for us on our end, because then it only increases our level of communication with each student and their families.
And we can see them actually in comparison to other kids in the school or the whole school district. So it helps really with that comprehensive picture of saying, we know the work that we do is really good, we know these services are helpful for kids, but now we have some real hard data in comparison that shows how successful kids can be when they have those wraparound supports around them.
One of the other things that's also been helpful is that through our conversations with the district have been able to then say, okay, well, this dashboard's really useful and helpful, but for our group and the way that we work with our students, some additional data points would really be beneficial. And so we're adding in things that are germane to our program.
One of the things that I love about this partnership is that there's a great deal of transparency that is involved, that we can pick up the phone and we can call the administrators of the district, and they can call us and really talk about how can we solve problems.
It has been extremely communicative, very engaging, very transparent, and honest.
We love being in the schools. We love it. We've, this is dream come true for us.
So those were obviously our all-star lineup, but these partners are really amazing, and we've been really blessed and fortunate to work alongside them through this process, because there have been bumps, and we still have a long way to go. But we're really excited about the relationships we've developed with these and other partners as well. Let me get back to sharing. And so in order to, can you see that? In order to make sure that all of our partners are supported in the same way that our collaborative partners are, we've tried, and this year have put in a framework to categorize and then provide different layers of support for each type. So as you can see, it gets progressively more intensive in terms of support and also accountability. So sponsored donors, which are exactly what you might imagine, and volunteers, those are limited in terms of time commitment. We don't track outcomes on that, and that's primarily managed at the building level. On the other side, the networking collaborative partners, that's growing in terms of intensity. So these are the agreements that would come to you, and they would need your approval, and then they're a longer-term commitment, and we do track outcomes with these. These are primarily managed by the district level and supported by the building administrators, and that's, takes a lot of relationship and communication between district and building and partner. I would draw your attention to the difference between network and collaborative. Collaborative partners really are the ones that we're targeting at our system indicators. We have great resources in our community, however, they're not all targeting the same things and outcomes. We want to be able to refer our kids and family services to those partners, but when you get into that collaborative zone, that's where we want to make sure that we're targeting at the same goals and working closely together to get there.
In reference, the circular diagram that I shared earlier about that, the process, right now, we're in a really heavy education process around what's the difference between a network and a collaborative partner, kind of how are those two things defined? Because they're all partners, that we want to, we don't want to exclude any partner organizations, but really where they fall in these buckets depends on the level of support that they need, the level of collaboration, how often we communicate them to get to the point where our current partners reference the value that they're seeing in the partnership from their perspective and their ability to really provide effective programming. And so in our registration process, we had, in each of these categories, you can see the number of partner organizations. We had 67 partner organizations register to partner with the district for the upcoming school year, which provides a huge amount of opportunity for us. A lot of them identified them as being in a certain bucket and will work with them to determine kind of where they align and how they can maybe support the district in different ways, or support the district more strategically, if that's a desire of theirs. But we also, if you look at those number of folks that are interested, or organizations that are interested, those are the organizations who said, we don't currently do this, we don't currently have this type of partnership or relationship with this district, but we'd be interested in exploring that. And so we're just thrilled that through this process, we've been able to open those doors to organizations that provide great resources in the community that we can really dig into and have just some consistency and wraparound between the school environment and the community environment, because that's what's going to be best for our kids and families. So as I mentioned, we've completed so far this year in our cycle registering our current partner organizations. We will continue to take reservations, it's a simple Google form, so if partners or potential partners haven't registered, they can still do that, no worries. And we also released an RFP for Summer Learning Loss Recovery Partnerships, so that we can again leverage the resources and expertise that our partner organizations have in supporting some of the learning loss that has occurred due to COVID-19. Moving forward, we'll continue to leverage the data that we have collected using our data dashboards this year for decision-making, exploring opportunities and successes that have happened this year as we've evolved both the process and our methods of teaching students, expanding existing and building new partnership programs for those organizations who are interested in developing stronger partner relationships, and then aligning programs with needs and really making sure that students are connected with meaningful programs early in the year so that they can be successful.
With that, we'll take any questions, if we can clarify anything or provide any additional information. We'd love to do that this time, or feedback.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Adam and Stephanie for presenting, and I am so glad to hear that before the programming, when it begins, that the board will see it in advance, because sometimes we didn't receive it until it was time for it to start, so that is helpful. It was nice to see the video also, and that you guys are looking at the data, because outcome is really important. We can support these programs, but what are the outcomes? So I appreciate the work that you put into it. It was helpful, because I did take a few notes here to see how things are changing, and so I want to thank you both for the work that you put in place, because it would make a difference. Because I would always say, okay, we're funding these programs, so what else? So it's nice, we'll be receiving the feedback, and it was really nice to hear the partners that you have, how they appreciate the collaboration with the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and we are all in it together, so I do thank you for that. Any other? Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yay. Good, that's an improvement. Um, sorry about this, and I did obviously have technical difficulties, so you may have addressed this, and I missed it when I was trying to get that technology right. So first of all, I'm really, really proud of the RFP process and of the district for having this. This was a board-defined goal, and I think that it's just been really helpful for alignment and for us to be able to have reliable data to make decisions moving forward. I think it's coming together great. I think it's really working well across the system at different levels. My question is, so you kind of, Adam, you kind of referenced, when you were speaking about the collaborative partners, that at some point, we would like to be able to refer for service if this is a good meet for the need as outlined by the student or as identified. So my question there is, I feel like we've been pretty clear on what we want to see as outcomes, and what we want to see as data points and as outcomes, and what we want to see as data points and collections. And that's all necessary for us to be able to make some decisions moving forward. I'm wondering if it's truly a 360 relationship? Are we also getting goals that are communicated to us from partners that are saying, hey, for us to be successful, here's kind of what we need from you? I'm wondering, like, at what kind of level is that collaboration happening?
Yeah, I'll take a first stab at this, and then Stephanie can correct me where I'm wrong. But this has been a real point of emphasis for us this year, over the last 18 months, actually. And it's getting that 360 view of where are the gaps? So we get both principal feedback, partner feedback, multiple times. And then we have those in the cycle, if you see the four times around, where those are meetings. And we'll sit down and say, hey, this is where we are. This is where our data tells us. What is not reflected in the story, so we can make sure to close those gaps? And that's an ongoing relationship that we continue to come back to, and we're getting better at it. And I think our partners are also getting better at it. And when we do that really well, that's where we'll start to see what President Humble was talking about with those outcomes. And so we've invested, and I would have loved to come to you with a more outcome-oriented presentation tonight, to say, hey, this is where we've moved the needle. We feel we've really got an infrastructure in place over the last 18 months to continue to have those conversations and bring that data to you in the future. Stephanie, I would let you talk about the experience that we've had this year.
Yeah, I would just add that one of the things that we've really been able to work with those collaborative partners on is getting their kind of outcomes and indicators shored up. They don't always have the same, exactly the same strategic objectives. So it's not necessarily that those partners who, you know, are directly going to, like, if they do X, then, you know, we're going to see academic improvement right away. They're contributing to a larger goal, looking at the whole child and improving readiness to learn, and all the social-emotional stuff that goes with that. So they have the opportunity to take their own program indicators. And I think Carrie with LBA referenced this briefly in the video, is that they can take their program indicators and put them actually in the dashboard with our program indicators. And so we can look overall at how are you, how are they progressing in the program? And how does that reflect in their academic and social-emotional growth? So that's, again, working towards that. But program partners absolutely have the opportunity to be able to add their program indicators into the dashboard, and we provide support in kind of fleshing out what that might look like.
Thank you, I love hearing that. I think that's an example of a true collaboration. You know, when you can share that data, and when you can have alignment with practice, and when you can have cross-application between organizations and networking, I think that's really exciting. That's exciting for our district, and for our students, and for our community. It's truly a community-school, between community and school effort, and I just think what you guys are doing is fantastic. So thank you so much for pursuing the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, you had made the comment about, it's like an all-star lineup, right? When you featured the six that were in the video. And then, you know, Stephanie shared those, quite a few other partners. So thinking that there's partners that are watching this, and they're super competitive, and they want to be an all-star. So can you help tell them, like, what it would take to be an all-star in your mind?
Yeah, absolutely. Sign up and engage with us. I should say, those are our longest-tenured partners as well. And so we have invested a lot of time, they've invested a lot of time in us, and we'd love to invest that time in others, if you're willing to come along on this journey with us. So sign up, reach out to Stephanie and I. Registration is open, we want partners, we need partners, and we would love to have you come along on this journey with us.
And if I can, if I'll ask one more question. You shared numbers, 1,532 students, and then it was like $372 per student. Not all partners, it's not a cost of the district, right? So I mean, that's, there's lots of, like, when we look at those four categories, some of those have no cost to us, they're just providing a service. So just want to point that out, because it seemed like something that I picked up later on in the presentation. So some of them are a ton of value, because there's no cost, right?
Absolutely.
Right. And we don't, we don't always track the outcomes with them, but we're hoping to do that moving forward. So with the partners that we're providing funding to, we really want to make sure that we're tracking outcomes. But our partner organizations overall are serving more than 1,500 kids. That's just those kind of seven high-investment partnerships right now.
Thank you.
And just to note that that summer RFP process, that is additional funds that we'll be engaging with for the loss of learning and targeting partners towards those system indicators to support our kids and engage. So that's additional funds going towards that work.
Any other comments? Director Merschbruck, were you ready to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
I just had one quick question. On the slide labeled Partner Program Participants by Race and Ethnicity, I think Stephanie said, when you were comparing the district population to our equity partners, that the increase in the black population compared to the white population is something that we would expect to see there. And I also wanted to ask about the Hispanic-Latino percent. It's, you know, basically the same from district towards our equity partners. Is that also what we would expect to see, or is there anything else to understand about that?
I think there's some opportunity to certainly look at that. We would expect that all of our black, brown, biracial, Hispanic students would be, that percentage would be higher than what it is in the district. And so that's the value of these data, is that this is telling us that a smaller percentage of Hispanic students than what we are seeing in the general population is being served by partner organizations. So how do we bring in new partner organizations and establish those same types of relationships with organizations that serve those students and those families? So we have absolutely started those conversations, but realized that there is a gap there in what we're seeing versus what we want to see in terms of our equity programs.
Just following up, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, fewer community partners out there to start with in that population? And maybe this is something that we just need to be focused on for long-term advocacy in the community, because that's a growing population in, you know, the country, the state, our community. So thanks.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I want to thank both of you for presenting, and we know we'll see you guys again with an update. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. We all appreciate it.
Thank you.
As we conclude tonight's meeting, the board will meet in a closed session to discuss the evaluation of the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at all? This requires a roll call vote.
Director Merschbruck?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Reese Singer?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humble's?
So we will move. Laurel, do you have instruction for us?
Yes. So we can actually officially adjourn the meeting at 6:49. And Jeff's going to go ahead.